Computer says four thirty, so let's get started. Follow the order.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunty.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Saps.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here. George, can we get you that?
All your heads please. Most gracious, Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the day that you have given to us and the blessings in it. We just pray, Father, for continued blessings upon those that are our servicemen over and women overseas and at home. Also, our first responders, Father, that keep us safe. We also ask the last, Father, that we always do is protect the farmers. See to it that they have good yields and that they are safe. We ask all these things, Father, in your son's precious name, amen.
Amen. Will you join us for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Move the agenda. Order.
Moved by George, supported by Steve to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O snae. Brief public comment. Okay. Now we get the consent calendar.
Motion to approve the consent calendar is presented. Order.
By George, supported by Steve to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say, motion carried. Administrator. Or did you want to do the?
I'll go ahead and do the administrator's report.
Okay.
Yeah, um, this last week for personnel updates, we have filled the open central dispatch position. Uh, we have filled the open buildings and grounds position. Largely due to the work of this board at the last meeting, so we do appreciate that. Very put his HVAC knowledge to to the test today. It's my understanding that Tony already had him on the roof looking at one that wasn't working too well. Um, over in District Court, so we apologize to those in District Court, but I believe that this is going to be a very good hire for us. Uh, this week, at the end of this week, we have interviews scheduled for the animal control officer position. Uh, we are still accepting applications for the security and bailiff position that is open. As far as projects, uh, a lot of the project updates that we have are related to the airport, so we will discuss them next week. And the advisory committee meeting and then at the next, uh, I believe it was July second, the airport authority meeting. Uh, the tree removal, uh, has closed, the beacon replacement has closed, uh, to um, as far as courthouse projects, uh, we have a retrofit light project that closes this Friday. This is where we are converting um, our lights to LED. Um, there are a few offices that have some LED lights in them right now, and it's just, it's it makes a big difference. And our next project that we are going to get to, uh, bid is window replacement. All these were part of the capital projects. Um, as far as operations, uh, last week Sheila and I had attended a walkthrough at the Isabella uh, recycling facility. I was able to make it to the morning session and Sheila made it into the afternoon session. Um, I was really impressed with the quantity of material that they pushed through there. And I also was not expecting them to have so many categories of recycling. A lot of times you hear we recycle this specific type of plastic and everything else gets thrown away, or we only recycle this type of cardboard and things like that. And they had four or five different categories. Not only plastics, but different types of metals and tins and all that too, that they they even have a section of their facility that is uh, for books. People can drop off books and those get recycled. And they say that the greatest part of that is typically when somebody drops off some books. For everyone they don't been there, they pull out three or four more of them. So it's not only a recycling program, but also an exchange program. Uh, but Sheila will be talking a little bit more if she wants to add her experience up there. I'm sure that she'd be more than welcome to. Uh, next week, we actually have a walkthrough scheduled at the Granger facility in Oak. Um, so that's the next step. We need to, we need to have eyes on the facilities and what capabilities we have here and how all of this will work together. So I look forward to reporting to you on that. Uh, yesterday Bill Leonard and I attended the North Shade Township meeting uh, for purposes of talking to them about the blight ordinance and the updated ordinance that we would like to, um, have them adopt. And I thought that was very well received. Um, all of the goals that we're trying to have with that program, um, you know, making it faster to get through the system, um, we were able to explain that to them. So the communication there was very good. Uh, Friday night, we do have an employee engagement, uh, committee event. It's the Employee Family Night at Reed's where I believe that we will be, um, cooking out. Um, this will be weather dependent. Uh, we are expecting thunderstorms and extreme heat, so we will keep all of the employees, uh, apprised of that status.
What time is that?
It starts at five thirty and it goes from, it's scheduled from five thirty to seven thirty, but, um, anybody who's out there can obviously stay as long as the park is open. Um, last meeting, we went into a closed session to discuss, uh, a turbine depreciation lawsuit, uh, with Constellation that I went over the details with you. I was expecting that that would have been settled by now, but it has not been, uh, but I don't think there are any hangups other than lawyers communicating with each other. Um, today I received an email from our lawyer and, uh, it was just the formalities of the names, contact information and phone numbers of everybody that will be a part of this settlement, including the county. And if I look at other settlements like this, that was the very last page of the settlement where people sign. Um, so I would be very disappointed if I don't have a final to you in two weeks. Um, I don't know exactly how that'll affect our deadlines because we have a judge that is retiring or has retired, so I, and I I expect that it'll be done in two weeks and hopefully we can sign off.
Who's the judge that's going to be retired?
Honestly, I'm not even sure what what court they are in, you know, I have not had to show up for that. I just received the information from our lawyers and pass that along to you. Um, but that is something that I do have the information for if you'd like to.
That's right.
Okay. Um, Woodhill Group is beginning to work on our chart of accounts. Um, so they're getting the appropriate, uh, access and they will be doing that one hundred percent remotely. Uh, this morning, the, uh, board chair and I attended or participated in a EOC tabletop exercise, um. So that the, we had a emergency operations center exercise this morning. I, I thought we all learned a lot. We, um, well, what we learned was that we need to learn more is basically so, um, our emergency manager is going to facilitate some training for Dave and I in the future. Uh, I would like to, uh, try and schedule a tour at the airport for the commissioners now that we're in the summer. For those of these commissioners, uh, you know, you were working in school, so if, uh, would you like me to do that through email?
Sounds good.
Okay.
So now the
Obviously now there's
Options and
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Preferable.
We need to do email or text message.
Okay, that sounds good. And I'll do that individually. Okay. And lastly, I will be absent for the next meeting, um, that we have on July second. I inadvertently scheduled something, um, a couple of months ago, and I did not realize that we had a board meeting that day, so I'm going to ask Sheila to step in for me for that.
Sheila's got to sit here.
Yeah. And that, no, I, that concludes my administrator's report.
Steve, what do you get?
Um, I attended, uh, the Elba Township meeting week ago today. Um, obviously there was the question about blight and Chris's handling that him and, uh, Roger went back and forth on that uh, issue. There was some wording in the new, uh, revamped blight. Um, that he had concerns over D four or something was, was the paragraph. Um, so it sounds like that's coming through the resolution process of, you know.
We made that adjustment and we resented out all of the townships.
Everybody, hopefully that will that will, everyone will agree that was a good change. Um, they are, um, finalizing their deal that they had made on some additional property to kind of square up their cemetery. Um, in which this property included a home and a pole barn. That cemetery has never had a maintenance building where they can keep things, so they've always had to transport everything back and forth to get to the Ford Cemetery, that's right on the county line. Um, this will allow them to keep some maintenance equipment right out of the cemetery, so they're excited about that. And they've had a, um, proposal given to them. Um, if you know anything about the Elba Township Hall, it's an extremely old building. Um, Angie probably knows better than I do how old it is. I know it was in the eighteen hundreds sometime.
It was around then.
No. Um, that's what you said.
It was, um, Masonic.
Yes, it was the Mason, yeah, it was the Masonic building. And so anyhow, it's, it's an old building. There's some some structural issues with it. Um, they had looked at using some of their ARPA funds to have the building re-sited with steel. They couldn't get a local contractor to even bid on it due to the shape of the, how bad the brick exterior is on it. Um, because the back of it to the alley, to the west alley, the bricks are literally falling off of it already. So, um, they did get a contractor out of the Lansing area, um, that gave them a bid and it was very substantial with no guarantee that it's going to actually hold the base area on there. Um, with that being said, they've had another proposal. There's a local, uh, business and piece of property there that has a much larger newer building on it that they are looking at, um, uh, possibly purchasing, which would allow then them to have enough room to actually have offices, um, because right now if you've ever been in there, it's pretty tight quarters, I guess would be a good way of putting it. And if anyone has to use the restroom, um, it's like you know exactly what they're doing in there. It's just not the greatest, uh, greatest setup right now. So that's kind of a, uh, an interesting um, thing that they're looking at. Um, I believe that when was it Paula came to the, um, the recycling meeting, um, there was some interest. And if there's going to be some remote recycling sites around the county, um, to utilize the park in Bannister is a possibility for part of that. It's a very large park. Um, that there's kind of a vast area that's really not really utilized of that park. Staying away from the pavilion, the playground and the ball field, there's still an area that's really not utilized that would work out probably very well for one. Um, so they are still interested in, as we go through this process, looking at that, um, they are looking at getting, uh, a building that's on there. Uh, at the building, I never knew what the building was, but I knew it looked similar to several others that are around the area. There was a sugar plant in Elba Township at one time, and they had several of these buildings. And when they went, when they closed the sugar plant, several of these were moved around the township and people made them into houses, people made them into living quarters for hired help people. Uh, this one was moved to the Bannister Park and a gentleman lived on the right on the edge of this little creek for, he was still living there when I was a kid. I remember him being there when he went to the park. So, um, Harry Fisher, I think was his name. Um, so anyhow, uh, they're looking at having that. Um, it's kind of an eyesore, not with the partner, but looking into having that torn down. And then I won't be able to be at the Parks and Rec meeting tomorrow, so I did reach out and and talk with John Rayburn. Um, they, uh, will discuss it further, but they had a little incident with one of their, uh, pieces of equipment out at the, um, park, so that'll be discussed further. But, uh, they're getting busier. Um, he was kind of anxiously awaiting, see what was going to happen today with the heat. Um, and how much and all the people in the North Star and Ashley area not having power. Um, they thought they may have a larger crowd than normal during the week, uh, due to that, just because of the heat and what have you, but there's all the parks are being utilized. If you haven't been to any of them, they look really well or look really good. They're taking great care of the grounds and stuff. Um, I mean, our, our parks are impressive. They, I mean, right down to Looney Act and Pompeii, I mean, they keep them, they mow them, they keep them looking sharp. I mean, you drive through Pompeii and the park looks really sharp. So, I mean, they, they do a really nice job.
Employees are doing a great job and I want to say that John has, has exceeded my expectations where I thought he would be as a manager.
Yep, I really think he is growing into that position and grasping it and and doing a good job. Definitely proud of his home, home communities, parks and wants the best for them. It's really impressive, so. That's it?
Yeah.
Yes, I had a meeting at Bethany Township. Um, I've just had, this month has been kind of quiet, but I, next week I have some meetings, so.
Speech to face. Can I turn to report, Tim?
Oh, me? Uh, I went to the Emerson Township, uh, meeting, uh, June tenth. Uh, they talked a lot about this. Well, they have two cemeteries. And they talked a lot about, uh, them, uh, keeping them up. It's it's hard to mow in between the tombstones and the cemeteries, uh, they don't get smaller. They stay the same or get bigger. Uh, so they're, uh, they had volunteered, uh, keeping up the cemeteries and but they're I think about ready to hire some. There, it's called, uh, in Tyler Road, it's called Pine Grove. And then there is a Emerson Cemetery. Uh, Constellation, uh, reached uh, settlement that has something to do with the wind turbines.
Yeah, that's what we were hoping that we could finalize at the next meeting.
So they, um, they talked about another waste, not Granger, uh, priority waste. Having a bid the, uh, in the township. So they talked about that. I went to the Alma City Commission, June eleventh, Tuesday. Um, they, uh, purchased trace analytical laboratories for wastewater treatment. They, uh, spent money on pro services for two pickle ball courts. Um, they, um, uh, talked about a resolution to, uh, work on the path, Charles Road. Uh, I think that would be like the Meyer path if you've ever lo, uh, walked on it. Uh, Orden says, it was just in the Morning Sun, uh, today too, that they amended a sign and billboard. Uh, the billboards are not allowed in the city anymore. The existing ones will stay up, but they won't be allowed to change or anything. Uh, they approved the firework sale. Uh, I just drove by a fireworks stand, uh, on, uh, Elder, or you call it Wright Avenue. Uh, I, I don't know where Wright Avenue and Elder. But anyway, uh, I, I think it has something to do with the Fourth of July. And then once the fourth is done, then they won't have the fireworks. Um, they approved appointments, the board members for planning, library and parks. Dave was there and, uh, he really clarified a, a mileage for the nine one one. Uh, if you own a hundred thousand dollar house, you just pay sixty.
Sixty dollars.
税局 taxes sixty dollars.
The taxable value is a hundred thousand dollars again.
Point six.
So. Yeah, and that's all.
George?
Yeah, uh, on the tenth, I attended Hamilton Township, the North Star Township. Obviously, that with the conditions today, cemeteries are a topic. Uh, they had their sextant was there. They were talking about different things and putting some foundations under stones and doing all the other things and of that nature. Uh, they did buy a piece of property from their neighbor due to the fact that they're putting a new township hall in there. Uh, they bought to the west, uh, where there was a county road. They had to get two county roads closed by the county. Obviously, nobody even knew they were there, but the map said they were there, so you have to go through condemnation. So they condemned the both roads. They bought over to their neighbor's property line. They gave her a, a good settlement, which was good. Uh, she talked about a lower one, but no, they, they said it was fair to give her that, what they gave her. And so that, everybody was happy with that.
Did she get a free plot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and so they're getting, they're moving dirt, I believe. Next week they start moving dirt.
Which, which one of the townships are you talking about? Didn't catch that.
Hamilton.
Hamilton, okay.
Thomas Sicles.
Yeah, yeah. Thomas Sicles. Uh, so they're excited about that, which is, which is fun to watch. Them that they haven't had a lot, but going to be able to have something that's nice for the whole community. Um, then North Star once again complains about how they're running their cemetery. But I'm here to tell you, every cemetery is getting that way. Everyone's having to start to hire mowing done. The old guard is gone. They don't take care of it like they did. And so they have to go back to the rules that were in place hundred years ago. And they have to start enforcing them because the way they mow the yards now with these big zero turn mowers and all that, they zip down through there and they don't want to pull around things. They want to get it done because they, it's, it's, it's just time and value of money. That's what it is. But people get very upset because you changed them. And I can speak to that because they did an Ithaca this spring and, uh, what the things that I was used to doing to my wife's headstone, I can no longer do. But you know what? I understand it. You just have to do something different. Open your mind up and do something different. Because I say to all the people that complain, if you're dead set against it, then you start paying a grave tax. And like North Town Township, they probably need ten thousand dollars or more a year to run it. And if you want all that stuff around it and ornaments and, and pay homage to to the, the deceased member of your family, then you need to pay for it. Because these, the cemeteries are perpetual care. Perpetual care means forever. We'll all be gone. And other people will be taken care of it.
Will go on.
That's just what happens. And so people have to have an understanding of the times we're in and things are changing. And so even I have to do that. So that's what, you know, we have to do those things. So North Star is struggling with that also. They're still struggling to figure out how they're going to spend their ARPA money. They're trying to find a contractor to do some things around the township hall, and that's a difficulty because all the contractors seem to be busy right now. So that's that. Now, on the eleventh, uh, the morning I had a commission on aging meeting. It was very good meeting. Um, the Rotary Club of Ithaca has, ha, gives, uh, commission on aging about fifteen hundred dollars a year to help senior citizens do different projects. We, for a long time, we bought wood floor, uh, ramps, all right? Now they've gone to aluminum ramps. And they can put aluminum ramps up in a short amount of time. And what's nice about them is when they're, when they're done with them, they can come and pick them up and then put them somewhere else. I mean, it's really a nicest. Uh, so we've been struggling on what to do. Well, and it worked out beautiful this, this week. The Rotary has donated about a half a dozen window air conditioners for seniors. Which means that there's some people that might not have any way to cool themselves down, will now have some opportunity to cool themselves down. So that was really a, a, a good, a good fortunate thing that, that happened there. Um, then I went to Lafayette Township. Lafayette Township, um, they're happy now with their cemetery. They found somebody that mows them, takes care of it, and they're all happy. So that's, that's done with that. And they're, and they're renewing some of the portions in their township hall with their, with their ARPA money. And then went to Wheeler Township. Wheeler Township is struggling a little bit with the Wheeler Village. Um, they've had some people move in there not that long ago, but a while back that weren't used to the village life of Wheeler. So they're complaining about their neighbors and complaining about getting things cleaned up and you know how that goes. So they're dealing with that. And then, uh, um, that was, uh, basically that for the week, I believe. Yeah, okay, we're all done. I got a Breckenridge meeting to go to one day.
We just got a live update from the emergency manager. The Ithaca Community Center will be open tonight for the cooling. Ten people used it last night, but and I went to the Alma meeting where Tim was at. And I went to the Seville Township meeting and after ten minutes of not being able to decide what color the building should be, I left. And, um, Chris and, Chris and I were in the sheriff's golf outing. And our golf was atrocious, but we had fun. Okay, uh, new business. Sheila, are you going to start off on that?
Yeah. Okay, so one thing that I've already provided you at your seat, this is from February of twenty twenty-three. This is from Eagle. This is the information about our county and our recycling, what, who has access to recycling? Who doesn't? So that's just some, some information for you to take with you. Um, what I am going to go over today in this PowerPoint is really what I already went over with all of the township supervisors. So that way you know what I said to them. And if there's anybody that's asking questions about MMP or about part one fifteen, send them to the recording of this so that they can see this, okay? Also, they can call me at any time, but this is basically essentially what I went through with the supervisors and it is going to lead into what I need from you for tonight. So background, you guys already know this. Um, the materials management plan is required due to part one fifteen. We currently have a solid waste plan that has not been updated since two thousand. So this is creating a new plan that will go in place of the solid waste plan that we have that's just collecting dust. What this does not do is this does not tell our citizens or our municipalities who they have to use as a hauler. It does not today and it will not tomorrow. What we are doing is we are creating access for our citizens to be able to utilize recycling. So I just want to be really, really clear with that. We are creating access. We are not dictating to anybody what they have to do. Um, goals and objectives of MMP. Each county is required by law to have an MMP that assures adequate materials management capacity for all non-hazardous solid waste generated in the county. It also does ensure that where the, our materials are going are also up to, um, to, are able to comply with estate and local laws. Um, of, that can be organics, recyclables, solid waste and other materials. Largely, we really do talk about recycling when it comes to part one fifteen, because that's the ones that they gave us benchmarks. We know we're at fifteen percent right now. We know where we need to be in twenty twenty-eight. We know where we need to be going forward. So those are the measurable ones. So that's why those get talked about the most, but it will impact other things as well. So the dollars and cents of it, that's what we all want to know about. We will get sixty We will get sixty thousand dollars annually as we are writing this plan. In addition, because we are in a multi-county regional plan, we are going to get another ten thousand dollars annually. On top of that, for the first three years, we are going to get a per capita for the amount of residents that we have here. That looks like twenty thousand dollars and eight, twenty thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars um, for those, for those first three years. I know that you guys already got all of our information from Isabella County, and so it really kind of had those numbers, but this is what those numbers are based on. Yes, sir.
Question. On our, um, per capita, do they include the population at the prison?
Um, I have no idea. When I looked up, it is based on our twenty twenty census, and the number that we have there is like fifty cents per person.
Yeah, okay, cuz that my question is, is they generate a lot of garbage at the thing.
They did.
You don't get, if you don't get the if it's, sometimes they are counted and sometimes they aren't. That's all.
I'm unsure, but it's based on the.
Based on census, they are counting. And the city, yes.
So in order to get this money, we're not gonna get it if we don't do anything. That's just the reality. In order to get this mon- this money, we need to be working towards these benchmarks. And, um, the earliest really we're gonna see any money is going to be in a year, July of twenty twenty five. They've been very clear about that. So we do not need to expect that there's gonna be any bankroll coming, cuz it's just not going to. Um, but now I'm gonna talk you through the examples of what this looks like in practice um, for that seventy thousand dollars that's gonna be coming in. So we are gonna hopefully enter into an inter-local agreement with Isabella County. What that is saying is we are going to pool our funds together in order to write this plan. So example A, we're just gonna say that this plan is gonna cost four hundred thousand dollars to write this plan. There are eight counties, so that is gonna be split evenly. Everybody's gonna be responsible for fifty thousand dollars to write this plan. So we can expect seventy thousand dollars is gonna come in year one. Well, fifty thousand of it is going to go to cover the cost of that plan. The other twenty thousand is going to stay in-house to be used towards this program, plus that per capita for the three years. That per capita is always staying in the county. That's never going into the pooled funds. Um, year two, we get our per capita and that seventy thousand dollars. Same thing for year three. Year four and going forward, it's gonna be seventy thousand dollars. Again, that money comes into the county. Okay? Example B, if the cost of the plan is six hundred thousand dollars, that is seventy five thousand dollars per unit, which is more than what we're gonna be getting in any year. Well, that does not mean that we are gonna take out of our general fund to pay that. The first year, one hundred percent of our seventy thousand dollars is gonna go to that. Year two, the other five thousand dollars, so that we are at the break even point, will go towards that plan. Then we would keep the sixty five thousand and the per capita. Okay? Any questions on that?
Like example A.
Me too. And and truly, that is what Jake is kind of expecting, is it will come in around forty thousand or four hundred thousand. So the benefits of collaborating. We have one plan for all eight region, or for the whole region, just one plan. And we will have the opportunity to say what is going to work best for Grasset County, but it's just one plan. And there's also gonna be one dedicated point person that is going to be responsible for doing all of the reporting. Now, you guys have decided that the deputy administrator here is the DPA for the county, but this person is gonna be for the region. So once this plan is approved, the DPA is going to be Isabella County. So up until then, I'm the point person. After that, it's gonna be the plan. They are gonna be responsible for doing all of the reporting to the state about what we're doing and how we're doing on those benchmarks. There will be region-wide implementation of this, and there will also be regional education. Education is a big piece of part one fifteen. We don't get to just put some recycling bins out and call it good. We have to educate our citizens about what recycling is, how it's important, and how to do it, most importantly. Um, and then there is just the benefit of having pooled funds rather than us doing it all by ourselves. This is our region. So at this point, as of today, there are eight counties that have, um, signed to be a part of this region. So important roles that are gonna go along with this, the County Approval Agency. This, I'm gonna ask you guys to vote on today to designate. Because in order for we, for us to do anything more, you guys have to be the approval agency, or you can give it to somebody else, but I think you want to be in charge of what's happening with the money that's coming into us. So you are going to serve as the primary responsible party. The buck's gonna stop with you. We're gonna ask you to approve everything that's gonna go out for this plan. Um, responsible for the implementation, you appoint the county DPA, which you guys have already done. You're also going to elect the members that are gonna sit on that Materials Management Planning Committee. You do have a hundred and eighty days from the July sixth date. So you guys really do need to be thinking about what that looks like, who you want to have in those seats. Um, you will be responsible for approving the initial MMP and then any modifications after that, and then also certifying progress, which will give you progress reports as we go. Um, the county designated planning agent. So what I will do, um, is that I will serve as the primary government resource for planning. So if somebody in one of your townships doesn't know what's going on with us, they have a question, that's gonna be me. I'm also gonna be responsible for reaching out to all of the entities. I'm going to be publishing all of the notifications of these meetings, because once we actually start doing those meetings, they will be open meetings. So we have to send out notification and all of that. So I'll be responsible for making sure all of that gets taken care of as well as managing and facilitating the public comment process when we get to the point of the plan being written. Then there's the Materials Management Planning Committee. So those are the people that are going to be coming together, putting all their brains together to decide what is best for this plan. Um, and I know we've talked about this list before, but these are all of the things that must be in that planning committee. So the role of the planning committee is to direct the regional DPA in the preparation of the Materials Management Plan, reviewing and approving the DPA work program. That's what we're sending to Eagle to say what we are doing. Um, identifying local policies and priorities, ensuring coordination of the preparation of the MMP, um, and advising the county municipalities. So the state benchmarks that I mentioned a little bit earlier, currently Michigan is at fifteen percent recycling rate. The goal of this MMP process is to divert waste from landfills and have it be recycled if possible. That is the goal. We will be better off for it. It is an opportunity for us truly, because we do not have a recycling program for our county. So by twenty twenty five, we need to be at thirty percent at twenty twenty eight. Um, and this is the one that we're gonna need to pay attention to by twenty twenty eight. For, because we have under a hundred thousand people, we need to have at least one drop off for every ten thousand residents without curbside recycling. So that does not mean that people have to be paying for recycling. It means that it's available to them. So we will figure out what that number is, so we know how many drop off sites that we need to have. So then we can put one in Elba Township, or we have some other ideas.
Absolutely.
But we will know how many drop off sites that we need to have. And then, um, I think my vision, Chris's vision, is that we will be using some of those seventy thousand dollars to be helping with that material being hauled away from these drop off sites. So that is not costing our residents, because we're able to use that seventy thousand dollars, partner with a hauler for them to come and pick up that material. And so that benefits, that's a win-win for the haulers and for us. Um, so.
Sheila?
Yes.
Do you envision any changes then to, uh, let's say, uh, I know the community of St. Louis, they have both recycling and and pickup, garbage pickup. So they really wouldn't have to see anything really change.
They do not have to, but it does give another opportunity. So say they're cleaning out their best basement. They have a bunch of whatever that they can't put in their bin.
Right.
And we have a drop off site, then they can access that as well.
But the long and the short of it, it does not affect their every week pickup.
Nope, we are not gonna tell them, anybody.
That's sure, it's clear that everybody knows that it's not gonna affect.
Yep, it does not have to. We are adding to not requiring anything.
Thank you.
So, upcoming. So we do have a regional county team, um, that will begin meeting every month. So that is just administrators or whoever is at that meeting, and we are trying to get to the point of having that whole committee. So we know all of the players and who's going to be there. We have not met yet um, since the inter-local agreement has come out and those kinds of things, but we are working on getting that planned. Um, I think we have final commitment from our eight participating counties. Um, so we feel pretty good about that. We are gonna ask today that you, um, sign the extension for our notice of an intent. Um, that is for two reasons. Number one, we are saying that we have intent to do something, but that something has yet to be released. So we don't know exactly what that something is that we're trying to say that we're gonna do. So we wanna see that language before we're saying that we're gonna sign on to this. And secondly, because we are a multi-county, they are giving us extra time, because it does need to go to lawyers, because it does need to go to the, and you know, there needs to be other contracts that are there. So we are asking for an extension to the end of August to make sure all of those pieces are together so that we can move forward. Um. The committee will be seated within a hundred and, um, eighty days of July sixth, yes, of July sixth. Um, and so we need to be thinking, you need to have an elected official that can be a commissioner. It does not have to be. When we did, when I met with the the townships, they actually suggested that somebody from a township be re- be the representative because how their rural township works is different than the city of Alma or the city of Ithaca, those kinds of things. So just be talking to people. Um, so you guys get to make that decision. Um, and I said earlier, the funds would be earliest July of twenty twenty five. So your next steps as a board of commissioner, uh, as the board of commissioners is that, um, we need a motion to designate if you guys choose by.
Do have a question for you. What is the cost to customers on this? We, what will be the cost? Like when this, when this happens, of course, everybody's gotta pay for your, uh, people having um, their garbage and recyclables picked up. What is the cost to it?
We are not going to change anybody's hauling or what they're doing. We are adding in other additional opportunities for people to recycle. So there would not be a cost to them.
Would we be doing the same thing that Isabella County is doing, or we would do what we're usually doing?
In in what way?
In paying for it. For instance, in Isabella County, they put it on their taxes, the recyclables.
What we are gonna, what we will be.
Happen here.
What we will be doing is creating drop offs and then utilizing the funds that we are getting from the state to pay haulers to take those funds. So it's not, we're not doing anything with.
Gone, then what happens?
Not doing anything with curbside. So this isn't affecting individual homes. This is adding, um, access.
So in other words, nothing changes. They still come and pick up their recyclables and their garbage.
Yeah.
And if you have a little extra, then you would call them again? Or call, who would you call?
Well, it would depend. We would be making that decision. If we have a a drop off site in Elba Township and they're, they can take all of the things, and that person could drive to Elba Township and and use the drop off.
I know that in St. Louis, because I've already done it, that though you can call them and they'll just come and give the extra. And so that I wouldn't think that that would change.
That would not change, cuz we're not changing anything for individual households.
Okay, so what happens? Like you said, you're gonna use this money for the next three years. After that three years, then what happens? Um, are the money's gone? And so are you, is it, does it go away? Or are you going to, then what?
Um, the state is saying that this, this will get, this money will be approved in the appropriations process. They expect that it will continue. Um, so I guess I can't speak to the what if, um.
Right now, they plan on doing it every year.
Right.
They don't plan on going away.
The three, the three years is for the per capita is the three years. But after that, the seventy thousand dollars, it will be passed in the appropriations.
And the ten, because we're in this group, right?
Sorry, what?
It's the sixty thousand, but there's the additional ten, so it's actually seventy thousand, because we joined a group, correct? That's the money that hopefully, according to what we've heard, appropriations committee will continue to.
Did I answer your question?
Actually, I'm asking for my townships. Um, with, um, they're not gonna go, I mean, they're gonna do exactly what they've been doing. And with the company that they're with.
And we're not asking.
Really, it's really up to that company to decide if they wanna come with you people or whatever.
No.
It's, it's completely separate. What we are doing is we're gonna create some drop off spots for our community. And we are gonna have extra opportunities for people to recycle. We are not telling anybody that they have to change anything with what they are currently doing.
Okay, all I'm doing, I will make copies of this and drop it off to my people, and I'm letting them make that decision of what they wanna do. It's really not up to me to decide with, about what they wanna do with their garbage. They.
We're not really asking.
Program, and that they're happy with that and really didn't wanna.
We're not asking for votes, uh, to change anything. That's not what this program does. This program creates extra opportunities in the future.
Okay, I'm real sorry that they weren't here this evening, but uh, and they didn't get a chance to come, um, to your, I guess you had something that you had all the.
And I can send this PowerPoint out. It's, it's fair game, and they can all watch the board meeting, and they can all call me.
That would be great if you could do that.
Which part?
Um, to send out this, um.
Absolutely.
And that's St. Louis, Bethany, and Alma.
You want me to send it to you, or you want me to send it to them? Cuz they should, if they were, if they're a township, they should have already got.
They already have this?
Hmm.
Okay, cuz.
From the township, sure, is your meeting.
I talked to, I've talked to all my people as, as of even up to today, and, um, they, they just feel that they're happy with what they're doing, and they didn't wanna be.
And that's.
I guess, you know, people are busy.
And that's perfectly fine. We're not gonna tell them that they have to. We just have to provide access.
Great, okay, I will.
Okay, so your next steps is that we need to designate, um, the board of commissioners as the county approval agency today. Um, I do ask that you, um, do sign that that extension so that that can be sent into Eagle. Um, if we do not send that and have that into them by the July sixth, they're gonna be looking for a notice of intent, which we do not have, because we don't know what we're intending to sign. So I do ask that you do that. And then there's the inter-local agreement, which would be with Claire, Gladwin, Isabella, Macasta, Midland, Ogama, and Osceola Counties.
You, you need three separate motions, correct?
I do.
Yeah.
Yes.
I so move that we designate the Grasset County Board of Commissioners as the County Approval Agency for the part one fifteen, yep.
Moved by Steve, supported by George, to designate Grasset County as a county approval agency. All those in favor? Uh, should we see a roll call?
Should be a roll call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes. Motion carried.
I so move that we submit a notice of intent for an extension to Eagle requesting a deadline of August thirty first of twenty twenty four. Second.
Motion by Steve, supported by Tim, to submit notice of intent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What was nay?
Nay.
Enroll, Steve.
I so move that we enter a local agreement with Claire, Gladwin, Isabella, Macasta, Midland, Ogama, Ogama, excuse me, and Osceola Counties. And I guess Grasset as well, cuz we're Grasset. Um, to work together for this act one one five. What can I?
Moved by Steve, supported by Tim, to enter into a inter-local agreement with all those counties. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What was nay?
Nay.
Okay, so the last thing that you have to do, and this is what you're just gonna wanna be thinking about. So because we are in, um, a regional plan, we actually get to have extra seats at the table. Um, and one of those gets to be an elected official. That can be from a township or a municipality. Like I said, we have a hundred and eighty days from July sixth for you guys to decide who that's gonna be. And also an individual from a business that produces waste. With that, I want to say that Granger is going to be filling in the role as a hauler on that committee. So we have an. on that committee. So we have an opportunity to have a business that is not Granger also there. So.
Windows of wastewater. But it doesn't necessarily have to be.
That, that's on one of the lists of things that they have, that we have to.
Original.
So they're going to fit in one of those spots, so it doesn't have to take our extra spot.
Okay.
So just be talking to businesses in the community, somebody that might have interest or, or want to participate. Um. So I know I was long winded, but there's a lot of information. Is there anything else that you need from me or any questions I can answer?
Maybe the next time you could wear a more colorful top.
I will do best. Thank you all.
Hey, Gresham County, would you use policy?
All right. This is a policy that we've actually been working on for about two months now. It ended up being a lot more complicated than what we expected. Um, and because there are some uh, items in here that, that are, could be considered disciplinary. We did send this policy to uh, our law, our law firm. To have them review it to make sure it was worded properly. Our law firm also has union contracts and stuff like that, so they could cross focus it. Before I get into it, I also want to say that the sheriff's office has a vehicle policy that will supersede the county policy. So the sheriff will follow his policy. If for some reason down the road that that policy goes away or whatever, it would revert back to this until the sheriff for a new internal policy. But that's um, I, I, how this was intended to be set up. We, as a county, did not have a vehicle policy in the past. Uh, we'd never done any type of driver's checks. We'd never done anything other than having a driver's license on file when they came on uh, as, as a new employee. Uh, so what this does is it essentially codifies how a, how an employee can be assigned a vehicle, what types of employees can take vehicles home and what reasons they can take them home.
Those are then be commissioners.
If a commissioner were to be assigned a vehicle, that they would fall under this umbrella. Yes. It does, it does include elected officials.
Yep.
So, um, it includes utility and recreational vehicle use. Uh, as we were writing this, the incident at the park came up. How do you handle it? Um, it includes what should happen or how quickly you're expecting to report an accident, what steps you take, what forms you fill out. Uh, should you get drug tested? Should you be alcohol tested? All of that i- is here. And lastly, it also um, covers if there be any uh, discipline for an accident or a string of accidents. Well, I, I guess that's the best explanation I can give it to you without going through and reading it, which I'm hoping everybody did.
I've got about three pages in and I said that's enough.
It also covers reimbursement for use of your private vehicles, which does, yeah, for all of us travel. So it accounts for every, I, I was, I thought it was, I'd spent a lot of time looking at policies. It looked like it was a very well thought out written policy that obviously I think our attorneys.
Yes.
Agreed and liked it. So that's a good thing.
Yep, absolutely. Um.
I go ahead and make a motion that we uh, approve county vehicle use policy dated June eighteenth, two thousand twenty four.
Support.
Moved by George, supported by Steve to adopt the county vehicle policy effective today. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What was nay? Motion carried. Drain commission building maintenance.
All right. This is um, a project that had kind of getting, gotten bumped down the line the last three or four fiscal years. Uh, where the drain commissioner was hoping to give his whole barn uh, a cosmetic facelift on the outside. Um, so he went out and, and got these bids. Um, the, I did not look this up right before the meeting, but I believe the budgeted amount for this was twenty five thousand dollars. Uh, he solicited three bids. The bids are in the packet. He is recommending or requesting that the board accept the bid from trademark contractors. And they are a, a Gresham County business and they did come in uh, significantly under our budget at thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty two dollars.
The head of our permits department have any guidelines or look at this at all or?
He did not. Uh, but the.
So what building experience does Bernie have to go ahead and authorize this? To do it? I mean, we're going to authorize the money, but.
Yeah.
And what's his expertise in picking up a company and?
Of what needed to be done?
Yeah.
Well, um, as far as expertise, the.
County building, right?
It is a county building.
That's what I might, that, that, the question I'm really asking is why wasn't Tony involved in this? It is a county building and we, we are responsible for the things that take place on, in county buildings.
I'll have an answer for you. I, I, I just know that when they were looking for the painting, they made sure that it was the proper paint for painting on sheet metal that had a warranty.
Well, they're not actually going, oh, I'm, I'm, let me rephrase that. They're not going to actually do any construction. They're just going to paint the building.
As far as construction, they will do, be doing some trimming, trimming and painting. The sky, skylights. Structurally, no, they will not be adjusting it at all.
All right. Okay.
I think it's truly like a facelift. I think it's just the. Make it less, look less like a barn and like an office. It should end up being two tones.
Kind of pink, but it's still going to be a pink.
Twenty five thousand dollar?
What's the budgeted amount?
Thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty two dollars and change.
Yeah.
That's what it asked, but the budgeted amount was more than that, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Right. Okay, I'm satisfied.
I so move that that we make Gresham County Drain Commissioner, or we authorize Gresham County Drain Commissioner to hire trademark contractors LLC for a sum of thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty two dollars and seventy six cents to perform the maintenance to the Gresham County Drain Commissioner Office Building.
Support.
Moved by Steve and supported by George. Bernie can paint his building. Amount of thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty two dollars and seventy six cents. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What was nay? Motion carried. Agreement regarding the state con- construction code enforcement and administration.
Uh, currently, our permits office has a contract with the city of Elma. Um, the, the contract, uh, the city of Elma processes permit applications. And then our permits department will go in and do the inspections and, and the work required to ensure that they are following everything properly. Uh, recently, the city of St. Louis had approached, uh, Tony Miller, our permits, our, our deputy permits officer uh, about a transition from them providing those in-house inspections to Gresham County providing those inspections similar to how the city of Elma does it. This contract, uh, things progressed rapidly unfortunately, um, due to some events.
Yeah, Paul Erskine has retired. Who used to do it?
Yep, and um, Kurt had approached us to see if we could provide coverage as soon as possible. Uh, what this contract is, is it's the exact same wording as the city of Elmas. Uh, they would adopt and follow the same permit fees that we use here, so we would not have to have a second set of calculations or collection and things like that. So it would operate the exact same methodology as um, the city of Elma. Uh, unfortunately, Tony was very busy this afternoon and could not make it here. Uh, I wanted him to assure you that he, he knew that he could handle the volume um, of this, which he can. Uh, we also have two backup people that can do inspections also. Um, I have had Deandra go over this. I've had Deandra talk to Kurt Giles and uh, the people that will be working uh, on the permits at the city in St. Louis. Uh, both parties were very happy with the arrangement. And we've gone as far as to have uh, Matt Hewitt and I T speak with St. Louis too, to make sure that we could uh, start working on getting a system together that we could remote in to access their stuff, so we don't have to be going into their office, similar with the city of Elma. So this contract, um, due to the, the haste of us, us trying to get through it, is also on the city of St. Louis's docket tonight. When they meet in a half hour. Um, so if this does get approved, uh, Sheila will be shooting Kurt uh, an email as, as soon as it, the vote is completed.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this contract to allow Tony to be.
State code enforcement.
Yeah, state of course, state, uh, what's that again?
State construction code enforcement.
You said it. You want to second me?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Moved by Jan, supported by Steve to agree to the state construction code enforcement and administration with the city of St. Louis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What was nay? Motion carried.
Thank you. From St. Louis.
ARPA project update.
All right, uh, I was asked to get together with some of the local municipalities that we have uh, helped fund some of their ARPA projects and get some pictures and kind of their storyline for how the projects that we have helped fund um, have benefited the community. Uh, so about a week and a half ago, I sent an email out to everybody and asked them to get me some pictures, a little bit of uh, communication for the board. So let me get this slideshow started. Um, I also want to say that Sheila put this slideshow together for me, so I very much appreciate that. Um, figured out how to move my Zoom stuff out of the way real quick. There we go. All right. First up, child advocacy. Um, as, as you're aware, we, we've funded three years of uh, operations for CASA, uh, child advocacy. Um, they have nineteen volunteers, advocates that would go out and work with children in the community that, um, needed intervention and needed uh, help from, from child advocacy. Through this, they were in the last three years, fifteen adoptions, eighteen reunifications and three guardianships that, that the CASA program, the court appointed special advocates program, um, achieved. The very last year, we also uh, voted to, there was some of that funding to help get the foster closet up and going and the baby pantry. I shouldn't say up and going, but expanded, so. The city of St. Louis, uh, they had, they were one of the first ones to complete their project. They took the their funds and combined it with their own ARPA funds to replace the water main, um, on M forty six. Fulton Township, uh, they expanded one of their cemeteries, which is, you guys know, has been a hot topic. Uh, they repaired the cemetery well, um, and uh, the Gold Dust Point Seawall Project, including bought some software, BSNA software. Gresham County Fire Departments, uh, we allocated to five different fire departments. One of them is still waiting for their truck and one of them did not get back to me, but uh, Ashley Iscon Parrecton shared these photos with me of, of what they purchased with their funds. Gresham County Road Commission got their generators in. Uh, they are, are, are very excited to have these. I mean, they got to test them out, obviously, just this.
They, they got to test it out, didn't they?
But uh, what they're really looking forward to is in the winter time when they're called in during the snowstorm, when there is no power. They will now have light and heat to be able to get out um, into the community. The Hero Center. This is uh, a, a great achievement for our community. Um, I, 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 I'm quite amazed a- at the services that they're able to provide out there. I remember when Nancy came to the board with a wish list of what she wanted to do, all the way down to providing haircuts for veterans. And in my mind, I'm like, this sounds so good, but how are you going to pull it off? And they pulled it off. They have pulled off everything that they.
Their director is a, 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 well, he's got an amazing history and he's really dedicated to it.
Right.
This is, this is a star for Gresham County, I, I, for sure. I mean, you have other people that like, you're like, wow.
Five star.
What's that?
Five star, yeah.
I mean, there's other counties, you know, and I've talked to people, they're like, that's awesome. You know what I mean? You guys have done this because it's, you know, for a rural county, this is really something we have this.
Very nice.
And our, our veterans department is still partners with them. They're out there every Wednesday afternoon, um, taking appointments and walk-ins too. So. Cold House, uh, uh, another great story. Um, for those that might not have been a, a part of this project, this was one of the first ones that we funded also. They came to the board looking for uh, one year's worth of funding. Uh, and the idea was, is that they made the promise that they would go out and they would fundraise to make sure that they were able to put enough money in the bank to keep their operations open year round and not have to find a, another nest of, of funds to live off of. And that's something that they were successfully did.
Done it, yeah.
And now they're open uh, three hundred and sixty five days a year. And they have secured several grants that'll keep them operating into the foreseeable future.
They, they've done a great job over there. Yeah, Jake and Nathan have done a wonderful job.
Hamilton Township, they're just getting ready to break ground on the um, township hall. Um, in fact, uh, I thought it was funny, Tom Clark, uh, the supervisor out there came into my office and handed me a set of the plans. Tom, I need pictures. I'm not going to put plans in. But thank you, Tom. I appreciate that. I do know that you are making progress. Um.
There's a groundbreaking here in another week or so.
I believe so, yeah. Village of Parrecton, uh, they worked on their um, water tower. They got that repainted. Looks very nice. Um, and had several, um, set their wastewater treatment.
Yes, that's their wastewater ponds that they had that, they did the.
They redid the banks.
Yep.
Yep, so.
Correct.
Uh, once again, you know, these generational projects that we're able to take this generational funding and, and knock out for uh, the next fifty years, the intention. Where their township uh, didn't get pictures, but they upgraded the village sewer system, um, replacing pumps in the monitor system.
Yeah, they're fortunate. They, 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 in a collaborative effort between the village of Breckenridge. The village of Breckenridge has their own sewer system, but in a collaboration, they ran, actually ran a force main down to the village. So they could have their so- so own sewer system. The, the village of Breckenridge really is the catalyst to help make that all go and uh, they spent their money wisely.
Very similar to how Fulton Township is all hooked up. Rainbow Lake and Barrington and Middleton and all the main, you know, there's seven different main sections of that system that connect it all together so that they can all have.
They can all have an enclosed system and it, it, it works well. It work, it works really well and, and and those, those folks uh, uh, really get along well together. So they, they do a lot of good work over there.
If someone says something to me and I missed it, I apologize to you. Individually, I didn't do it on purpose. I didn't exclude anything on purpose, but uh, then there we have the Breckenridge Inside Out Park. You mentioned Breckenridge. Well, the majority of us were in, in attendance at.
Yeah.
Unveiling of.
Two parks downtown.
The amazing churches.
Well, we'll do another one of these when we conclude our.
We will. And, and yes, there was about twenty more projects that some of them underground, you know, they're like, we didn't take pictures. We didn't know you were going to do this. It's understandable.
And it's also how we really put together a full PowerPoint.
Yeah.
All different things.
I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of something like a booklet or something, or something on, on a flash drive. We can send all the participants.
And that might.
They can look at what happened to their, not only their money, but everybody else's money.
It might be something. It might be something that I actually need to get out and do to or somebody.
I I just.
Staff.
They've done some incredible stuff around this county, so.
There's some people that wouldn't have today if we. Able to help them out.
Absolutely. When you said generational money, this was a once in a generation that they're gonna have these funds that update this stuff, so it's.
And it's proven out, I mean. We we can talk about the village of Ashley. They've got. The Dollar General now that they wouldn't have had. They've got two more businesses coming in that they wouldn't have had.
What other two businesses do you have coming in?
There's B and B and B building a truck stop or a gas station truck stop, just to the.
I can't remember which other one.
And then uh, they they're soliciting a number of different uh, fast food restaurants to kind of. The plan is to keep a. A lot available between. The B and B truck stop. And the Dollar General. Cause there'll be a a service road from the back, so you can get in off Arnold Road. That's kind of the, everybody. Wants that. Um, one restaurant in particular would I think rather have had the corner lot, the Dollar General. But I think they'll live as long as they have the the back entrance and it's visible.
They're smart to do that because the the village, people in the village don't want to have to go out on fifty-seven.
No, absolutely.
And so it's just, it's a great add-on and it'll work just fine.
And they're working with the road commission right now on um. Because part of that road was the county's.
Right.
Now the city has bought the property and it's now the city's, so they're working with the road commission on changing the speed limit. And. Signing it. Which will also lead to needing sidewalks to be put all the way out there, because they're right now, they have lots of people that. Walk to Dollar General and they're in the road when they're walking, so which you do that, then you gotta. Uh, increase your street lights and so it's a process. It's a project, but they are working on all of that stuff.
I do see Agrofield is putting a mi- a million da- uh, gallon tank in out there too, so that's gonna help.
There's a restaurant also gonna go out there, right?
Well, that that's.
Trying.
They're trying.
They're trying. I think it's.
Something's gonna end up out there, whether it's the one they think they want, which would be. I'll, it's gonna be, if there ever is really one there, I would be like, wow. It's, I I I, it'll be really simple. There's something, there will be a restaurant.
Well, it's kind of nice because you go from Fulton all the way to Chesney, there's really nothing.
Nothing, no.
And so.
It used to be from Carson City to Chesney.
Yeah, so it's kind of nice to have a gas station or.
Yeah.
A dollar store, but a gas station would be nice. You can eat and get gas.
Absolutely.
Or the bathroom, whatever you need to do. Anyway, I'm, I think that's really nice.
Yeah, I think it'll be a.
And I cannot tell you how many times I had to go to work at Ashley and walk right by that corner because there's nothing there. And you're, it's early in the morning, it's so dark and I'm driving, I'm thinking, I think I went by where I'm supposed to turn, or I'll come back.
At least in a long road, it's now blacked out and that used to be, it was crap.
Yeah.
What you talk about generational things, those are the types of thing. They would, I'm not gonna say would never have been able to do it. But it would have been a long time because it takes a long time to for a small village to get that.
I mean, to to think, you know, they use those ARPA funds to be able to purchase that land. I mean. Actually spend not on the map, you know what I mean, for a long time because it didn't touch the highway. Now it touches the highway, which is, you know, opens that door. Significantly to people coming off of fifty-seven and.
Well.
And and I think once there's a, if it truly becomes like a truck stop, I think you'll see a lot of traffic come off.
Well, it's not only good for the village, it's good for the local economy.
Oh, yeah.
Good for the school system. I mean, it benefits so many.
Well, and they're looking at all, I mean, they're mowing that ten acres of property for years that hardly ever moved down. You know, they're looking at trying to lot sections off that had. Vacant for fifty years, you know, to hopefully be able to put some building sites in there, so.
Just think, yesterday you're Ashley, tomorrow you'll be like Elmo.
There you go.
Might even get a college.
Really can, but. Thank you, Chris. Yeah, here's resolution.
Great, um. It has recently been brought to our attention that Gresham County has never adopted Act eighty-eight. Uh, Act eighty-eight was passed by the Michigan Legislature back in nineteen sixty-one. What it does is um. A a local municipality, if they adopt it. It allows their employees who have left service before they're qualifying for a pension. That go to another municipality that have a similar pension. To combine the years of service to qualify for a pension at full rate versus. Uh, a a percentage. So.
I always thought we could. And I would, yeah, when I read that, I was going, what? I thought we had done already.
Yeah.
We did too.
Every municipality. In the county has adopted this, the last being Ashley. I think they did it either this year or last year. Well, but the majority of them, like it's kind of no, they adopted it back in the sixties. So this is. The first time that we've been approached by someone saying, we would really like to appreciate it.
One of my townships that contacted. Me and said, I used to work here, Gresham County. I work at another municipality now. I want to retire, but I can't use my time. I've reached retirement age and I've got enough years of service. And I thought, I was like. I thought they was real, like we didn't do it because.
I always thought.
Thought everybody had done it back in high.
I was just unaware of it, yeah.
I was like, wow, okay.
So you want, you want a motion on this? Like I make a motion that we adopt Act eighty-eight.
Support.
Moved by Jan, supported by Steve to adopt the resolution. To support a resolution adopting Act number eighty-eight. All those in favor, oh, we should have a roll call.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Yes. Ocean carried. Now on to Gresham County I T Managed Services Provider. Are you gonna talk, Matt? Okay.
Up sometime. But no, no. I've got a very short three slide presentation. It's just tables, so. Uh, I, tonight I wanted to talk to you all about the I T Managed Services Contract out of the. I T contracts that run through my office, this one's probably the most important because uh. This is how our users receive uh, total support. So this contract runs uh, through the end of this fiscal year and we solicited um, vendors to. Bid on this contract. We received twelve responses. Um, and then I also reached out to some of our other providers like Applied Imaging and that source one that had done business with us in other areas. Or in the past in the same areas. And asked them to respond to neither one of those two uh, vendors did respond. So first up, what I wanted to show was a list of proposals that I wouldn't recommend to this board. Most of them are due to the extreme high cost of the proposals, um. In. The top of the range here is two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars a year. Um, I also included two from the bottom end of the range. Buzz Clan and Golden Five Computing. Buzz Clan, I wanted to eliminate because they didn't have any local government experience. And then Golden Five Computing had an offshore help desk, which isn't useful to us. These is a, I wanted to show you these ones, um, one just in trans- for the sake of transparency. So that everybody can see that these are the companies that bid and also. Just to give you an idea of the extreme range of how high these proposals go and how low they go to, so. So next up is the list of proposals that I would recommend. So there's three main companies that I'm kind of zeroing in on here. Um, V C three, they're our current uh. Managed Service Provider. Vector Tech Group is a another managed services provider that's out of like the Grand Rapids area. We've used them in the past for what they call structured cabling, so to do network cabling runs in the building. Uh, they've helped us out with that in the past. And then Corporate Technologies is another company that I thought it submitted a good proposal. Theirs was a bit higher than um, V C three's, about forty thousand dollars higher, um. So out of those three proposals, I would recommend that we continue doing business with V C three. Um, about two years ago, the company that we were doing business with I T right in this capacity, V C three acquired them. So those two companies merged together. I T right was a local company here in Bath. V C three is a. They're basically a collection of local managed services providers and V C three is the company that kind of holds them all. And make sure that they all do business in a similar way, that type of thing. So. We did experience some some minor customer service issues. Back when that transition happened, those have for the most part been eliminated now. I feel like we've kind of come out of that. And have had really good success with V C three, V C three the last few months, um. And that's one of the reasons that I wanted to recommend that we go forward with them. Nothing against Vector Tech Group or Carpet Technologies. I thought they both submitted extremely strong proposals, um, and I would recommend. Uh, that next time this contract comes up for renewal, that we reach out to both of them individually, because I would like to see them bid in the future too. So. Um, that's really the gist of. The proposals that came back. Um, and I I realize that these costs are much less than what we've paid in the past. This third table that I included in our, I'm sorry, much more than what we paid in the past, um. I included this table as well, just to give you an idea of where we started out with I T right and V C three at and kind of where we are now. Back in twenty eighteen, we were paying. About seventy-five thousand dollars a year. It included the remote help desk, it included the onsite support three days a week. And here we are in twenty twenty-five. Uh, with their proposal, with no onsite support coming in at a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars a year. With the onsite support, it comes in at two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars a year, so. So that kind of brings me into the second part of uh, my memo and what I can get to talk about tonight. I think it's time to bring that onsite support role back inside Gresham County. Especially at the costs that we're seeing. Where staff augmentation from all of all of these vendors, I mean. Even the low vendor came in at forty thousand dollars a year. Um, and that was just them basically hiring somebody to do that work locally.
It's three days a week versus.
Yeah, it's three days a week. V C three is proposing three days a week at that, uh, sorry. At the eighty-four thousand dollars, um. The in-house position that I'm proposing. I had Sheila score that position. So we worked together to create a position description and we worked together to get it graded and it came in at grade seven. Which is was basically a salary of forty-one thousand dollars to fifty-four thousand dollars per year. So. That's what that position was created at, as an internal position, fifty-four thousand dollars versus. Um, V C three loading in at eighty-four thousand.
What position's that?
This would, so this. This is the position that is onsite support for Gresham County. So if a user has an issue that can't be solved by the remote help desk, we have somebody that sits here at Gresham County three days a week and. Works on those issues and also. Works on onsite project work and does other things.
This would end up being a full-time, they'd be here five days a week, correct?
Yeah, if we brought it in-house, it would be a five-day week, full-time position.
How much is a benefit package? This is salary, right?
This is salary, yeah.
We would look at between twenty and forty percent depending on the healthcare coverage.
Don't, don't you do that? You.
He doesn't do the staff augmentation.
I don't do the staff augmentation. I'm I'm a director. I typically don't do end user support unless there's an emergency issue.
It's the extra stuff that has to happen to make things work.
What are some of the most popular things that that staff person does now when we contract with V C three?
Either way. Yeah, so that the, that role does on onsite user support. So if there's an issue where somebody physically has to be laying hands on equipment, they do that. Some of the other things they do is user onboarding and offboarding. So if somebody gets hired or. It's like, oh, they go through like a, it's almost like a fifty point checklist of all the things that need to happen in order to get somebody started here at the county. So that they can get into all of their systems and that type of thing. And they do the onboarding as well or the offboarding as well. They also do project work lately that's consisted of our cyclical PC replacements. So once every five years, a person gets a new PC, so we basically. Uh. Replace a fifth of our computers every year, so they work on that as well. Those are the main, I mean, they do a lot of other things that I don't have listed that I included in the position description that I included in the board packet. But those are, those are the main things that they do. What I find with, and one of the other reasons I wanted to bring this to the board was that. In the last year, I've seen three different V C three onsite techs come through um, to help our users out. They come with the technical knowledge that they need. They can walk up to a computer and start troubleshooting it. But what they lack is the institutional knowledge of. How the county works and who reports to who and. And that type of thing, which I I guide them on, but it takes them a while to get up to up to speed on how that all works. And it takes me away from the duties that I'm actually supposed to be doing.
There's one more item that I I I tried to sneak into this job description. I'm hoping that you can talk about that.
Yeah, so uh, one of the other things that administration requested was that we include. Uh, FOIA coordination. As a responsibility of this role, so that if uh, administration needed somebody to pull records for FOIA, FOIA requests, that this person would do that. As well, um, administration is anticipating less than twenty-five percent of the amount of time. This job would be doing the FOIA requests.
This would mostly assist the Sheriff's Department and help alleviate some of their redacting and putting together videos. And um, I have not yet talked to the prosecutor's office to see if they would also utilize this position, but. Um, that's the type of additional work that that I know that we've talked about as a word before that. This would provide us an opportunity. Going from a three-day a work, three-day a week. Contracted position to a five-day a week in-house position at a similar cost.
A similar clause. No, it's actually the last. If you take the worst case scenario, the highest pay and the highest rate, let's say they take full insurance benefits for a family. Which is the highest you're gonna cost, right? Well, still saves us about eighty-four hundred dollars over V C threes. That's using the highest pay and the highest, you know, forty percent for your benefit package, so it's actually a savings. Worst case scenario, whoever you hire and, you know, the insurance package they end up taking. Um, I I'll attest to. The FOIA thing is not getting any better than five years that Sheriff's been the sheriff. It's it's just get, it gets worse daily. By how many people are requesting FOIAs. It's a, I don't know if you call the phase we're going through or what, but. When I was there and I've been gone for six months now, it's. It literally is eat, it's a. It's an employee consumption thing. I mean, it literally eats up so much of their time. Especially when you get into, everything is on video now. And. Let's say you have an incident that occurred in the jail, that somebody wants FOIAed. There's how many cameras in the jail? This is, I mean. Yeah, forty now, so there's potential video footage from forty cameras that needs to be reviewed. That could possibly, you know, if this person is moving throughout the facility. It's extremely time consuming and it takes, you know what I mean, and someone with computer skill and savvy and. And software that can make this easier, knowledge base and time to research it and stuff. I think it can be a really good thing for the county and not be so, I mean. There was times that we had detective sergeants that. They were spending days, if not weeks, their whole day, their whole time, instead of working on solving a crime. They were working on someone's FOIA that. So a lot of them are frivolous. Yeah, exactly. Some of it's frivolous stuff, you're like, okay. So I think that this is a a great opportunity, not only for you to have somebody who gets that institutional knowledge. You know, there's things that are time consuming and there's things that, like we're under sheriffish, that needed five seconds of your time to fix. Cause I couldn't figure it out, you know what I mean, but they have somebody on site daily who can. Handle those kind of things and I think. You know. Chair your office, it's to know five days a week, you had somebody here who could run up there when something goes wrong or there's a hiccup, it's huge. I mean, obviously they'll be tied up with other duties some, but I just think that it would be wonderful. I mean, obviously they'll be tied up with other duties some, but I just think that it would be wonderful to have somebody here all the time. When something goes wrong, because. Doesn't go wrong usually in the morning when you're trying to check your emails and drink your coffee. It's when. Somebody's on the phone wanting something right now. And you're like. Trying to explain to them, well, the guy will be here.
Speaking for all of us that onsite is the.
Absolutely, absolutely. Cause it's like, are you, if somebody was mad at you over the phone, wants something. Well, I can't get into my computer right now. You know, they're, they're mad at you. They're mad at you. They're mad at the commission. They're mad at everybody where if someone's here. Hopefully that will help expedite some of that stuff, so. And I think it would be great for you because you go on vacation and things every now and then. It's like, if there was somebody here. Maybe your phone will ring a little bit less. That would be nice.
And this saves money. Saves money, yeah.
As long as we, if we were gonna go with augmentation and have this, we could just have V C three and nobody here.
How do you take time off? I mean.
So typically I have to arrange my vacation around V C three's schedule. So if they're here three days a week and I want to go on vacation for several, you know, a week. I will have to pull onsite days from other weeks. So that's how I accommodate that. V C three.
Three is what we currently have.
But you don't get a chance to take a very long vacation.
I mean, I I could, I would just have to pull support from additional days, which, you know, it's like, at that point, is it worth it to even go?
Commissioner Gay, I want to address your question. We have two different options here for our contract going forward. Both of them are going to cost more than what our current contract is. So costs will be going up based on the bids that we got. But of the two options that we have. Uh, we're comfortable saying that bringing someone in-house will give us more coverage. At the same cost or less than. What it would cost to have some staff augmentation three days a week.
Okay, I have another question.
Say something. So I look at this and this will help the sheriff's office immensely with FOIA. And um, having V C three onsite. But if you look at the cost of the V C three, one forty two, seven forty plus eighty four thousand, what was that? Two hundred and twenty six thousand man? Is that what it was? And that's up over one, almost over one hundred percent what we paid. This year. And you're not gonna go up one hundred percent if you hire your own person. To do this. Six could go up another percent. Who knows?
And I I forget if I made this point, but I did in the memo, but I just wanted to say here, one of the. It's not that V C three's pricing is. Out of line with the others. It's just that historically, we locked in at a ridiculous rate that we, they never should have signed up with us back then at that cost. I mean, seventy five thousand dollars for what they were giving us was a no brainer at the time for the county to go forward. It's just now, now they're getting into these areas where we have to make decisions whether it makes sense to.
We won't be using these other people at all then, right?
No, we would still use them for remote help desk. They also monitor all of our systems and that type of thing.
They wouldn't send a person in here.
They wouldn't send somebody physically onsite three days a week. Instead, we would hire somebody internally that's a Gresham County employee that would.
That person will deal with V C three every day, probably, you know.
Much as I do.
Exactly, if not more, exactly. They just will be our employee who's here five days a week other than, you know, sick and vacation.
Is this a one year contract that they offered?
This is a, sorry, I should have mentioned that this is a three year contract they proposed.
With no.
There are cost increases built into it. So the way that they calculate that is after the first year. They'll take a look at how many users we have and they'll adjust that up or down. Uh, they'll take a look at how many users Gresham County. V C three, sorry.
V C three.
V C three, the managed service provider that.
We usually use.
That we use, yeah. They'll take a look at how many users we have and recalculate it, but they will also increase the amount per user by. Four percent each year, or if the, I think it's a C P I value is greater than four percent, they'll adjust it out to align with that. But yeah, there is cost increases built into this. But I would say that they're. At least. Uh, expected and.
It's unfair.
Fair, there's a, yeah, it's it's matched to the consumer price index, so.
They put the clause in there just in case things go crazy. They're protected for.
Well, first thing first, I would make a more or entertain a motion that we would go with V C three for their operations. And that's, that's the cost, one forty two, seventy, seventy forty?
Yes.
Yep, one forty two, seven forty.
That's the first thing I would make a motion that would do that.
Need to include that it's a three year contract. Now, since that's what the agreement is.
I think that I asked, I I don't even think you have to include the amount necessarily. It's just you selecting the vendor, but. Cause the, the amount you're approving isn't, you haven't even approved the budget for it yet, because it's next year's budget.
Next year's, but we're, we're approving that much money for it. Your support.
Sure, sorry. I gotta talk to them.
Mention that. By George and supported by Tim. Steve, Steve. To uh enter into agreement with V C three. All those in favor? What was nay? Motion carried.
Thank you for putting all the work into that.
And I'll make another motion. That we would negate the staff augmentation that they provide and. Create our own position here. Uh, and we're gonna call that person what?
It would be the I T support specialist is what we called it.
The I T support specialist. At a grade seven? Moved by George, supported by Steve. To negate the staff augmentation and hire somebody to work.
I like those words, negate aug augmentation.
You talking about an extra person or the same person?
The one that he proposed that, yeah, that person to approve that position to be created.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
What was nay? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Did a lot of good work. We appreciate you. That are owner, enjoy our computers. Do they have any unfinished business? Is there any public comment? And make a motion that we suspend our regular meeting and go into the finance meeting.
Support.
And by George, supported by Tim. To go into the finance committee. Finance meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Okay, George.
Okay. Uh, finance report.
Sorry, we have not had any other drain prepayments. Uh, we're still at forty one thousand dollars for the year. Where our ARPA funds and projects list update, we were appropriated seven point nine million dollars. We have distributed six point eight. Um, I believe if you look in our cash balances, we. Have about one point three five in the account. The math does not add up because of the interest that we have been earning. So we do have some.
We got some interest.
Yep. We do have some money in there that is uh washed from any of the federal requirements that we'll be able to. Use for a project going forward at some point in time. Expenses in May uh included closing out Breckenridge and it's cause projects. You guys, you remember when downtown Ethico was closed off and they were digging there. So, and then we were in attendance at Breckenridge Hills. Our O P A balance says of June twelfth, we were sitting at two point four two million dollars. Uh, we are up five percent on the calendar year. Uh, just about halfway through, S and P is up fourteen point one percent as a benchmark. That concludes. The items that I, uh, and like I said, I'm gonna add in there. Going forward, any expenses or bills that I have. Related to Woodhill Group, uh, specific to their work with administration. And the projects that you approved, so that you see that that sticks out every. Every month that we work.
So we're going pretty good.
Yeah, we are. We're doing. We're, we're.
It's paying for itself.
Uh, the shares, what?
What's your? Well, similar to like a four O one K or four O one A, um, when you buy into a mutual fund. You buy a share every time and that share has a, goes up or down with the market. So you own the shares and the shares are worth so much more.
And so that that went down a little bit. The shares.
Isn't it?
Yes, because we had not, we haven't made a purchase in several months. We haven't sent money to into our O P A account. So when we have expenses related to administration, which they charge those quarterly to us. They sell some of our shares to pay for those expenses. So the shares did go down despite the fact that the.
Market was up.
We're still.
The, the price of the shares went up.
So we're still in the plus side.
Correct, yeah. We have a total of two point one and seed money in there, so, and we're at two point.
Four. That should perpetually, given the current market conditions, take care of itself.
Till we start tapping into it to pay for expenses, yes. Cash balances. Um, I'm gonna point out to you the fluctuation in the general fund. We went from just under seven million dollars to just over six million dollars. The reason being is that during the month of May. We made distributions from the general fund to the other funds that rely on appropriations from the general fund. Uh, last summer, that was not performed until approximately July or August. So that's why we're seeing a dip a little bit earlier in this year's funds. Uh, the big funds that um. We have that we send money from the general fund to include the capital improvement. Fund, friend of the court, uh, the general fund has to pays for a, a good amount of the friend of the court and the childcare fund. Those are the three biggest. There are others such as landfill and things like that, but um, that's why we're seeing a fluctuation there in May of twenty four. I'm gonna go ahead and let you ask any questions that you have from the check register for May. Commissioner Bailey, whenever you. Follow, we can move on to the revenue and expenditure report.
Give him a couple of minutes.
Absolutely.
As I always say, you had this information, so if there's anything that came up. I would urge you to get a hold of the administrator if you have a problem. And if it still continues to be a problem, bring it to the board and we can discuss it.
I have a question on this one.
Yeah.
I just don't remember. It says, um, just about there, Michigan County Works com fun. What does that mean? I can't remember.
That's our workers count.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Video, I think of. Three hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred.
Taxes. Gentlemen.
From. These are all the credit cards.
Yep, correct. First National Bank of Omaha, those are our credit card payments. Three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Um, I actually believe that that was an ARPA fund that was out. That was their ARPA funds.
Sheila, uh, three hundred and fifty six dollars. That, that's from where she went to. That she creating thing.
Yeah, those are, those were mileage reimbursements. Um, it was so high because she had that week long conference that was. Quite a ways away. I think it was a total of like two hundred and fifty miles traveled just for that conference at sixty, that's two hundred dollar reimbursement at sixty seven cents. Or a hundred and, and she's been traveling a lot to, to Isabella County for the uh recycling facility meetings on a. Very irregular basis. So yes, that is a little higher than what we usually have seen her be reimbursed for, but it's just because she was traveling.
Here's one. Why is, uh, why is this so high? Three thousand, three hundred and fifty three dollars for the, one of the credit cards?
Um, I mean, the credit card payments fluctuate. Um, we would have to go in and pull an individual credit card statement for that.
I'll stop them sometime. I was just curious. It seemed high.
Take out, shake our policy has a five thousand dollar.
Limit, yeah.
That says, rating our policy.
Anything else? No, move on to the revenue and expenditure report.
You know, again, I'm really happy to see where our general plan is sitting at, at forty seven percent of budget. As we are nearly uh three quarters of the way through the fiscal year, seventy five percent of the way for.
I think you made a mistake here. You, you have this and you have it down here too.
Right there means it was voided. We hadn't, I think.
Okay, I see. These are all voided.
Yeah.
Okay, if I was to say.
Yeah, absolutely. Great. Good catch.
Do you have a question?
Physical year ends October.
September thirty first, and if we can.
There's no September thirty.
Oh, thirty, I'm sorry. It ends the thirtieth and begins the first.
So we're two thirds.
Yeah. I'm here at forty seven percent. That's a little less than fifty percent and we're two thirds into the year. It's good. Yep.
Yeah, it wasn't.
That's all right. It's not a big deal. I was just curious.
Do you recognize the vendor G A A L from the Delico Tax Fund?
No, I would have to look that up.
If you would like me to assist John with any financials for Parks and Rec. Let him know, um, I could show him some of the tricks and and what I would expect that you would want to see.
Yeah, yeah.
He, you know. Anything else from the revenue expenditure report? You don't have anything, we'll go on to the treasury report. My investments.
I made bank transfers, may receipt register and may investments were provided in your packet. Um, the investment interest is running stable, so that's not, it hasn't changed. Yeah, yeah, it has.
It doesn't.
Um, so that is continuing to, to do what we want it to do. Um. Other than that, there's not, not really anything different from our report this month. In April, let me see.
You're all done with the uh tax settlement, Richard?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we were done with that uh by the end of May. Now we're in tax foreclosure cycle.
Some people, that's not a very good deal.
No, no, it's not. It's not, but that's where we are right now. Um. In that cycle, so other than that. Running along smoothly, everything's going well. Yeah, yeah, it's going well. So does anybody have any questions? All right. Thanks very much.
Very much, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Anything else that needs to come to the finance committee? There are none. I will make a motion that we return to the general meeting. By George, supported by Steve to. Turn to the general meeting.
For the purpose to.
Always, I'm sorry. Purpose of paying the bills.
Yeah.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Those are paid.
Our one duty that you had.
Duty that I blew away. Thing I had, I had to do all.
Big age was here. So as uh, we had to have a special meeting to get the bills.
You're supposed to do anything on this. Are you supposed to do anything on this?
Can we leave the finding?
Yep. You got a question? Go ahead.
Hey, George. Um, are we supposed to do anything with this?
No, that's coming next month.
That's just information.
This information for next month. Cause they're, we're gonna, they're asking us, remember when I talked about integrated health network and the insurance companies were trying to take over and all that? This pertains to that, we'll have a rev- uh, a resolution to give to the powers to be at the state level. That'll be next week.
What do you, I guess I, maybe I wasn't here. You said the insurance is supposed to try to take over or what is this?
They've been doing this for the last several years. This is not, this is not anything new. Uh, the insurance lobby has been pushing the legislators to change the way they handle the uh, the uh, Medicare funds. And so they wanna handle the funds and they wanna distribute it. The only advantage to all that is that the legislators don't, they can wash their hands of it, don't have to deal with it. But it's a terrible way to run a business because the integrated health network is in the, is in the business to help people. They're not in the business to make insurance companies rich. That's the bottom line. And we get, and e- even though our conservative points of view sometime would think that, well, that'd be okay if they rent, that'd be cheaper. No, it's not, because they're gonna take all the money they can, trust me. And we can't allow that to happen. So, but we'll get into that next month.
Yeah, I'll read it over.
Is there any additional public comment? Not. I approved it, no, second.
I kept looking at it.
All right.
It looks really strange.